Yes, and what else have the five components about connect to make issues are real good? You're doing great. Is there something else you want to say?
I was the one who called in for NH SBA last year. And I like just signed off for the agent because it starts to be like this resolution all favor. I, 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 if this resolution takes forever.
Yeah, can you have me one more time?
Let's refresh the board. Right, super, thank you.
Can you have me with the man? Oh, you see?
All right, we're good?
You could be doing some meaningful stuff.
No, she got a little bag, she does. For the best down the word, sorry, word. All right, are we good to go? Yep, okay, so calls to order at seven oh seven. Thank you, everybody. All right, um, so we'll open with agenda review. Yeah, perfect, yeah, and welcome Colleen, our principal, who is online this evening. Um, any more numbers you need to add or review items on the agenda? No, is there anything, um, are we hunting the DOE fund report? Is that right?
Uh, yes.
Removing that one, okay, so we're gonna move the DOE annual financial report to the October meeting, so we'll skip E. In the business requiring discussion. But I think that is it for changes. Um, all right, any members of the public who wish to address the board? Okay, I don't think we have anybody online. Moving on, principals' report, so Colleen has submitted her reports. Um, and I will just say a word of thanks to Ryan, hopefully everybody noticed she added some details for us, some rationales for us. Um, as I mentioned in a previous meeting, we're trying to help guide our preparations and make sure we're ready to take the appropriate actions, have the appropriate discussions in our meetings, and so a thank you to Ryan for working towards that on our behalf. Um, so Colleen, if we could give Colleen a chance to speak. She's on Zoom. We guys can pull her over. It's happening. Has she been invited to join the panel? Nope, no worries.
Welcome, Colleen, if you'll unmute yourself, you should be good to go.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Jim.
There we go. Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Thanks so much for letting me do this from home, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Um, so I don't have much to add to the agenda, the uh, the principals' report that I, that I already shared with you all. Um, I know that, um, we are getting ready to hit the ground running with our fall benchmark testing starting next week. And we just figured out today that we're all set to go with technology, we've got all the, everything ready to go, we just have to get the kids going with the i-ready testing, so we'll be excited to see that and see how that works. Um, hopefully we'll get some good results from that and some good data from that. Um, teachers are excited to use it in grades two to five. So, um, it's been a good couple of weeks, it's been very busy. I mean, everybody's really dived headfirst into everything that we're doing and, um, it's been good, it's been great.
Great. Um, and I see there's a note about the accessible playground update, um.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, if you had more to add to that one.
Yeah, so Nan, we just got notice that the, uh, the, um, the order was just placed this past Tuesday, I believe. There was a delay in placing the order, we got the PO to them about two weeks ago, but there was a delay on their end for placing it. We just got word that it was placed on Tues- Tuesday with an ETA of eight to 10 weeks, they said.
Yeah, so. Come on warmer weather.
No frozen ground.
By November should be.
I think we'll be okay.
Yeah.
So, Colleen, it seems like a good time to be a second grader from what I can tell. In terms of class sizes, that is skirting a little too small.
Any little class, yeah, that's, I mean, for, for this year, yeah, we only have sixty in second grade this year, so it's our smallest group for sure.
Do you have a question? Um, other than, you wanna be the second grader?
No, I don't have to have a follow-up question.
Okay.
Yeah, kind of, we're, I know we're sort of looking at enrollments and then, I mean, we'll talk a little bit in the budget process, I know we've talked about. Or we'll be talking about like, what is the right staffing level, what are we doing rolling forward next year? So, I mean, it's a big crystal ball at this point, but, um, I will ask on that front, do we expect, do we have any reason to expect additional students at this point in the year?
Always. We always have students joining us, um, oftentimes in January after Christmas. Students will join us, um, depending on the Dartmouth schedule and families joining and coming across. Um, so I think that our, our enrollment fluctuates not dramatically throughout the course of the year, but definitely fluctuates up and down. Um, all month, all year long, is there's not a given time where it just stops, we've had kids join as late as May.
All right, okay, other questions for Colleen?
Yeah, can you just remind us what the, and this might be actually the board question, but like, what are the target class sizes for, is it K two and three five?
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm gonna guess, make this off the top of my head, I wanna say our target class size is fifteen to eighteen for K through two. And seventeen to twenty-two for three through five, that's what sticks in my head, I may be slightly off on those.
That sounds right.
Does anyone in the room wanna chime in? I see some smoothiness. Sorry.
I was gonna let you, so. Okay. Twenty and then like up to twenty-four, but I need to check the policy. Okay, okay, perfect, thank you. Yeah, I know we do, and we do have a range, and you know, it's always a challenge because often we have enough students, we're blessed to have enough students that we're often kind of making that decision, are we gonna go on the lower end of that range with the fifth section or fourth section? Or are we gonna go on the higher end of that range with, you know, one fewer section? So, that's always a decision that our principals is having to make at different grade levels, so.
And it is not mandated, it is.
It's not mandated, no. Yeah, then I think there is a mandate for the higher.
I have the number if you want.
Okay, please.
K to two, fourteen to twenty, three to five, seventeen to twenty-two.
Oh, I have one right, yeah, yeah.
Not too many bad.
Yes. All right. So we are, I mean, we are in the range, um, with the exception of maybe our fourth grade, which is a little bit light, um, this year, but. Yeah, they have five sections, and I will just say without, you know, asking our principal to give away any private student information, sometimes there are very good reasons for that, sometimes there is, you know, a particular class that is a little more high touch for whatever reason, or you know, something going on in the grade level that, that we as a board, that's why, you know, we set the staffing level for the school. And we set that in our budget process, and then we really rely on our building leaders to make those decisions about where best to place people within the building, so. Yeah.
And, uh, Colleen, I know this is probably done before your time, but in terms of the playground update, can you remind me what exactly is the update going towards? Is it updated equipment, is it replacing old equipment or something else?
Excuse me, it's not replacing old equipment, it is, um, new equipment and it's adaptive equipment so that it allows for any students with, um, mobility issues, a wheelchair, to be able to get on two different, um, pieces of equipment out there to play, um, and have access to the, the playground in a different way.
To where, where is it gonna be on the current playgrounds?
It is, it's gonna be near the, um, the, what we call the, the small playground, the little playground, uh, it'll be right near there.
Okay.
All right, and, um, just a reminder to everyone that this is coming, um, through grant funding, so it's bridement funds and friends of Hanover funds that we are finally fully secured and are ready to move forward, so. Yeah.
All right, another question, um, and I, and I do apologize, I, I was not here in August, and so I read the minutes, but doesn't, did not, I made it into memory as well, I should have. Um, but the, the fall benchmark thing made me wonder about the state test data, do we have that information about how our students have done? And so we talked about it last month, and we said we were gonna do a more longitudinal study, and I suspect we just haven't quite filled out the audit in the budget process.
So they just approved the, all of the test results, they just finalized them, so I think probably on October we'll be able to.
Okay, so we'll, we'll flag that, um, thanks for follow-up. If I forget and don't see it on the agenda, please. Uh, okay. Thank you. Any last questions for Colleen? All right, thank you very much, Colleen, um, we will move on into business requiring discussion, so internet upgrades, and we've got Brian Patton here to talk us through those.
Um, so, as you know, the, um, legislature passed it here, bell to bell law, sort of saying for instructional time. Do personal devices need to be not interrupting that instruction? They are waiting on the award to go through their, uh, as you, as you all know, they've asked, or they think that they recommended, now they're required, for the board to come up with a policy. And they, you know, we believe you should have it this way, but it's, so we're waiting for the boards to, where to come up with a policy. Um, I think we got the first draft, and now we're gonna have the first reading, and I mean, you know what the statuses of the board policy committee.
I'm drawing a total, I'm drawing a total blank.
We're doing it.
Yeah.
Student council, um, at the high school, I participated in a meeting with the student council against the, uh, the, um, legislature is asking for the boards to take all stakeholders, parents, uh, faculty, uh, they didn't actually, maybe students, which was a little bit of a, a thing, but, so we talked about that today. So, that, um, got brought in the executive order in August, so we are, it's, so we're trying to implement it now. And one of the things that we decided was, if all student devices are supposed to be off, we shouldn't be providing self-registering Wi-Fi. Because students will get back on it immediately if they're self-registering. We also, as you know, one of my big initiatives has been to try and create a technology framework for the SAU and for all schools that is sustainable. And stuff that we can support. One of the ways we wanna do this is we haven't been very good about shutting off people that have left with Wi-Fi because they haven't been tracked coming on. You know, there's sort of, we have people that are like, oh, just give them access, and people will just be like, oh, I'm in a hurry, I'm here. And then that person leaves and doesn't come off, so we don't know, so we sort of said, let's have a clean break, this is the opportunity to do that, so we have turned off guest self-registration, we have not shut down the guest Wi-Fi. Um, that's, you know, you know, uh, still available, and if people are coming in to talk or, or they're coming for a day, or they substitute, uh, each of the teams, tech teams at each of the schools have been trained to give out guest Wi-Fi for the day, for the week, what it is. It's caused some consternation because we uh, no longer have self-registering guest Wi-Fi after three o'clock. For extracurriculars, I haven't gotten much feedback from the parents of, uh, Ray, or from our Ms., or from the parents at, uh, MCS. We had a little bit of a hiccup in that the, uh, after-school program at MCS didn't get, we're getting them online today, tomorrow. Um, the parents of Hanover, some parents, it's interesting because they sort of, they were very in favor of bell to bell. Everyone that talked to me, like, love the bell to bell, but after three, that's, you know, I gotta get to the kid. So, uh, we are sort of figuring out ways to, uh, address that. One of the things we did was that, uh, we sort of said, well, well, what we will do is create a password. I mean, one of the things that's up for debate is technically, according to our stuff, we shouldn't support personal devices on our network. It's just not, one doesn't do that, right? That's not what we're supposed to do, but we recognize reality, as all of you know. I've gotten all of your personal devices onto that, and all the faculty's personal devices onto that. Now, that's up for discussion, but we sort of said, that's too much of a leak to do in one step, so we've got everyone up on the discussion, we sort of thought, um, that there'll probably be some leakage, you know, that we're kind of okay. So, at the, at the, at the high school, there's roughly a hundred and fifty faculty and, and staff. So we're like, oh, okay, so we'll, we'll check it from time to time and see, because not everyone has got their device on and stuff like that, there are what was it? Six hundred students? So we're thinking, the pessimists were like, it's gonna, there's gonna be leakage within weeks, and the optimists were like, maybe we'll make it till Christmas and stuff like that, by one o'clock on the opening day, there were eight hundred and fifty people on our Wi-Fi, on that particular Wi-Fi, um, meaning, and it became obvious that all the students had it. That was extremely frustrating to me. And one of the questions I will actually have for you guys is, do we get to talk? Is there anything we can do to talk to parents and students? And say, yeah, it's a state law. You shouldn't be looking to me to prevent this tactic, you shouldn't be looking to the teachers to prevent this through policing and stuff. It's a state law.
Yeah, so I think, um, just to interrupt you for half a second, I think, um, there's definitely been a lot of questions at the high school level. I don't know at the Hanovers, this is primarily the Ray School, I doubt it's been as much of an issue here, I think you're gonna get some parents who are coming in for the day or whatever, but we have cell phone coverage here, so I don't, yeah, so I don't think it's gonna be an issue here, um. As I think Ben mentioned to you, um, in our mini Dresden meeting that we did right before this, there were, there was a parent of a child who came and expressed some concerns, um, and I think at the Dresden meeting on the twenty-third, it would behoove us to be ready to have a, a full-blown conversation about, you know, what are our policies gonna be, what are our expectations, you know, what, what is some of the education that we can do? I mean, to be fair to these students, it's kind of sprung on them as well, um. So, I think, you know, by, by, also teenagers by their very nature are gonna, you know, if they see an opening, they're gonna take it, right? I mean, that's, you know, so I think it's definitely, um, something to be ready to talk about at the meeting on the twenty-third.
Right, and one of the more, one more nuanced thing is we have this password that we give out for personal devices for the faculty. We had assumed up until two o'clock on that Thursday, the next day, that that was somehow breached, because, I mean, that's no great secret, I can discuss this in public, you can see the Wi-Fi that's on your phone. One of the reasons we sort of don't appreciate, we kind of like, eh, you know, so that's fine. Separate from that is the, is the password that gives access to the Wi-Fi and, um, that's on all of the machines that we own, the student machines and the faculty machines. That's a twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven character, non-human readable, easily password, that's, um, deployed and to un-deploy it is massively disruptive because we have to take back every machine from every faculty and student for that. We found out at two o'clock on Thursday that that had been breached and shared. Which is a very, very big deal, because we completely undid the plan we had for what we were gonna do to look forward to fix this all. We're still working on that, and I will come to you, um, with more information, um, addressed and about that, I have some more that I can share. I wanted to sort of pause and then.
Yeah, and I would just agree with all the points Colleen made, but also the one that I think we haven't directly mentioned yet on, on, at least on cameras, which is that the high school is also in the dead zone in terms of the Wi-Fi in general, which has tier twenty-one, three o'clock thing become a safety issue at night when it comes to students being dropped off at eleven eight, eleven PM, sports events. And if parent's not able to communicate with them in terms of delays or something's going on, students will have no way of knowing, the parent is nowhere going to, they have no way to connect each other, there's no publicly available Wi-Fi in that particular area.
Push back gently about that, the tests we've done this week show that each of the Wi-Fi sig, each of the cellular signals in the parking lot is sufficient to send SMS on a regular basis.
I, I live in town, just, I don't have any of my house, absolutely. There's a corner that's just gotten bigger and bigger, and I'm there every day, and I'm on Wi-Fi constantly. I was at, I was at the high school today, which is why I had to put the password on my phone, I could not make a phone call because I could not. And I had to make a phone call related to the meeting I was in at the SAU.
What would you have done if the Wi-Fi had been down?
The Wi-Fi was down, I was gonna ask you about that.
We sent out an email to everyone that VTEL was fixing the Wi-Fi today, so the Wi-Fi was down.
Yeah, yeah, so I was in two meetings today, and it impacted our meetings, I mean, we cannot get the work done that we needed to get done. We had someone joining a meeting remotely, who, we couldn't connect him, and he's sending emails, he's here with Wi-Fi upside, saying, hey, is everybody there? Well, we couldn't join the meeting to connect with him, so those, that's what happens when you don't.
Yeah.
And so I made sure that it was on my phone.
But it's not within our control to me. It's not within our control if VTEL goes down.
Oh, that, I understand completely, but.
So what we're trying to tell.
Then become problematic for just the ability to conduct regular, I'm gonna say business, but it's not business, it's education, because the way that the curriculum and the work is designed these days is very much device-dependent, so we do have to sort of have a plan, if there's going to be lots of times, and I don't have this transparency, and you might not either, as to if the network will be reliable or not, if it is not going to be, then we have to do some work to figure out how to manage this, so just show us and stop.
Correct, so, so that would be one of the.
Sorry, I'm gonna interrupt for half a second, because we do have to move on pretty quickly, but no. I know you're trying to share it, but I didn't mean to cut you off completely, I was gonna ask you if you have any sort of last things that you need from the Hanover Board this evening for us to kind of. Okay. Any questions?
So, Brian, what, what would the, what is the plan for when there are massive amounts of public onsite for certain events? Like, things like when all the students get together for the band concerts, big football games, graduation, voting day?
I asked, I asked Jay last year, are we responsible for providing services to non-educational hours? And he said no. So we've been planning toward that. That when we implement that plan, people are like, what do you mean, there's not, I mean, it's just kind of like, um, they do have their Chromebooks, which are connected to Wi-Fi twenty-four seven. SMS for the three services that we use, AT&amp;T, Verizon, and T-Mobile worked in the parking lot over several times. We have phones in all of the buildings, in all of the rooms in all of the buildings. I'm kind of like, well, you know, there's a kind of, we can, we can do it, but you guys are sending mixed signals, and then we must stay within this boundary of money. I mean, the quotes I got for doing it correctly have gone between twelve thousand and a hundred and twenty thousand, that's what we've been doing over the last week.
Yeah, sure. I just think your comment about like, Ray School, like, so much of this wrapped up in what people have said, it is just because of the dead zone, right? Like, these conversations wouldn't be happening if it was a place in which cell service was easily happening.
Yep.
And so I, I think to honor the piece about like, what is school and what is town is tricky because it also happens to be where the oldest class of school is, where your kids have their own devices versus an elementary school where it's less likely, so, I mean, I think there's always going to be that argument of like, kids used to get dropped off before cell phones, like.
Right.
Sporting teams have sporting events, this actually doesn't have to do with the school, this has to do with the fact that cultural shift is that you would always have Wi-Fi available.
Right.
From your cell service, and, and you don't, in town, you wouldn't necessarily depend on the school to have open access to Wi-Fi at eleven PM. You wouldn't, like, I mean, public library across the street does turn off their Wi-Fi sometimes, like, I think, it's, um, and so I think that that's a rub, that I think is maybe the question we need to look at, because I, I'm not questioning the safe, the safety, that perception of safety because of the cultural moment that we're in, but if there was full Wi-Fi available through cellular services, I do think we would not be spending that amount of time in that situation.
So, if everyone is okay, I'm gonna suggest that we, I think this was a good point of information, a good discussion, I, Brian, we really appreciate you coming, I can feel the frustration, because I know you're trying to make us safer, we, we very much appreciate that, um, and I think, um, hopefully this was kind of a helpful, like, what are people thinking about heading into the twenty-third? Um, and I'm, I know we're all happy to chat with you too, if you have, you know, wanna reach out to us individually, or even, you know, ask the board members, survey board members, or whatever, I think there's room for that as well, so, um, I know we're happy to continue the dialogue heading into that meeting on the twenty-third, um, yeah.
One, one thing I'll plug, this was discussed at the Dresden meeting before you arrived, at, from the member of the public, but it does seem that the high school council is also talking about this with some, of like righteous rage.
I was a little, I was a little non-plus when they're like, well, we have to use our phones, because they write the, um, assignment on the board, and we have to have our phones to take a picture of them.
And I, I'm mindful what Kelly's saying, she's completely right, but one of the things that's, that's happened as well, which we're trying to work on the policy side regarding the phone thing as well as the Instagram thing, is that there are lots of changes to extracurricular schedules that happen very last minute, in some cases, after school has ended, and then the students have ten minutes to find out about this change that their actually practice has been canceled because of weather, or it's at a different location, you have to find a ride, you know, things of that nature, which is apparently becoming quite an issue. And concurrently, via the bell to bell change, so be, being able to give those sorts of updates via social media is no longer gonna be allowed, I'm speaking early, so that might change, but it's my understanding that will no longer be allowed. The loudspeaker doesn't really work in terms of general announcements, it's way too staticky, and people are in the bathroom or outside the building, won't hear it anyway. According to HHS staff, the students do not check their email. And which, that is what it is, but sort of like what.
Students also check the monitors that have. They don't read the, at some point, I'm like.
So we need to.
I mean, I don't, I, I mean, again, not the time for the conversation, but I think.
We, we, we need to figure out.
These aren't new issues.
So, Dresden Fair, twenty-third, I would budget a fair amount of time for this conversation, because I think it's gonna happen. All right, Brian, thank you again, um, we, we appreciate all the efforts, um. Budget guidelines? Oh, no, point AP approver. Who exactly thought we did that last meeting? Did we not do that last meeting? No? Okay. I think it's my turn.
Building dead, it's your enthusiasm.
We'll point at that, that this board has asked, I think multiple times, going back to that previous annoying chair, that we had some sort of rotation basis be developed, has there been any updates from the administration on that to make it a little more fluid and obvious?
Who's been doing it? Okay, Carrie, uh, okay. Carrie Renee. And Carrie, did you, like, your seconds go down?
Two minutes you in a row, right?
Yeah, I've just, I've been doing it since I got on in March.
Thank you for that service. The demo, I will accept your self-ambination.
When is it over?
This is December.
I'll remember. They tell you.
Anybody else have bandwidth this fall?
I'll do it.
Marcel, you're the best, I will, I will go ahead and put myself on for the winter, I will have more bandwidth.
I'll, I'll join you.
Okay. All right. Moving on, great, I look forward to it. All right, I will send a note to that. Email Heather, all right, I'll email Heather.
I can do it.
All right, oh, thank you, Ben, okay. Um, thank you guys for stepping up this quarter, I really appreciate it. Uh, moving on now to the budget guidelines, I will graciously hand over the reins to my fellow board budget committee member, Renee, our chair.
So, uh, wanna first, uh, thank, uh, Theresa for prepping the quick model and bringing forth the previous version of lots of documents that I am excited to see for. But I am excited to see for first step. Uh, and work with Kelly to adjust, so we met last Friday, um, the Hanover Budget Committee met. And we talked a lot about, um, what bigger spending items might need to be coming forth, um. One being lovely recording wall, which has a nice orange broken, you not you signs. And the estimates for that, um, and we talked about, um, the playground, although that's this year and that was more of an exciting, who else? We talked about other, other big things, um. And then, well, the town.
Oh, ELA, not school, ELA, thank you.
Um, so curriculum wise, they're also looking at a new ELA curriculum this year, um, and deciding how much, wha- what that should be. We asked about kind of generally, do we think that's gonna be in the realm of like what the math and the science curriculums were? Um, the answer was yes, so in terms of like bigger things that we know right now. That might be part of the conversation, um, those were definitely in the mix. Um, a couple other pieces that are for us to consider, um, are capital improvements. So there is a capital improvement committee, I don't know what the formal name is, just starting up.
That's it.
We.
You nailed it.
Um. And, uh, we're expecting to have, uh, this coming up now. We also met, the Dresden Budget Committee met earlier today and that's gonna be relevant for a few other items. But one of the things that came out of that related to the, um, capital improvement committee. Is that we were talking about seeing a proposal from that committee. And I believe in Teresa, correct me if I'm wrong here, Ben, I know you were there, uh, October thirty-first, Teresa, you were too, or November.
Yeah.
So in this budget cycle.
In this budget cycle. Um, looking at bold things that are more maintenance items and then also wanting to start thinking five, ten year like plan. So we know, um, there's a lot of things that are likely gonna come out of that as well as from the TruX Cullens. Stuff that's been going on, um, I think is all input into that committee. So there's a few different variables that we expect could be considerations beyond what you see in the quick model currently and what's here. So. With that being said, um, a few other assumptions that were in the quick model were the CPI, um, is three point two right now. The northeast region, I think, is what we typically use. Um, and so as of July and as of this week, I think Teresa mentioned still three point two. Um, and another major consideration that Hanover has is the, if you might recall back in our conversation about tip stuff. Um, the capital improvement planning committee, uh, and the select board and the town are working on major changes, updates to the downtown. So there's the Hanover, there's the Main Street and then there's West Wheelock. And they are now lumped together, um, in the capital improvement planning committees. Planning Horizon, uh, for FY twenty-seven, both of which are not, do not have a funding source. Um, as of the current consideration, which we are meeting next Friday, September nineteenth. So this is kind of coming from email and conversations with that group, um. And Tara, correct me if I'm wrong here on any of this stuff, but, um.
I'm still not on the email.
Thank you for that information, we'll make sure that's amended, um. The estimate is currently for West Wheelock and. Uh, I have it here.
Going down.
Yeah, uh, and South Main are around twenty-seven million dollars and that is, um, from. Uh, the assumptions based on a July twenty-twenty-two, um, as assessment. Uh, plus another assessment that does not, neither which actually I should say, take into account inflation driven or and tariff driven price increases. So estimates from John Bill and the Select Board Meeting most recently indicated that that could go anywhere between fifty percent to a hundred percent higher. So that's important for us because that is currently in consideration for FY twenty-seven. Nothing is guaranteed because that's. Obviously still TBD, but, um, strong consideration there for a major impact for Hanover taxpayers that I think we should be thinking about.
Any mention of a cellphone tower in any of those discussions?
I love that.
I think. I know, I know for our, I'm sorry to interrupt you for a second, but for our capital improvement committee, I mean. I, I don't know, but I imagine cellphone towers that, that the, um, phone companies have a vested interest in getting those also in places. And so I, I imagine that that cost would probably not even be borne by us. I think it would be borne by somebody else, but it's worth.
Unmotivated.
Perhaps having the conversation.
She's largely unmotivated.
Unmotivated.
By our very small.
But we have all these new people moving in with all this new construction now, right?
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question about what you said so far?
Yes.
I apologize, but this is my perennial difficulty with fiscal years.
Mm hmm.
Um, when you say fiscal year twenty-seven to fiscal year twenty-nine.
Hmm.
That is not the budget that we are currently preparing, right? We are doing twenty-six, twenty-seven, so this would be hitting.
Oh.
The subsequent, okay.
Mm hmm.
All right, perfect, thank you, cool, that's good, important information to have.
Yes.
Okay.
Very important information. Um.
But good, no, that's important, so, okay, perfect, thank you.
School year, fiscal year.
Yeah.
Brains in the school. Um, okay, so I'm trying to think if there's anything else major that, um, there's, well. Uh, I will, I will just say, I know that everybody got this, uh, a large twenty-four hours in advance. Please, you know, give other questions, but ultimately what the, uh, Hanover Budget Committee was recommending last week was aiming for a budget increase of three percent. Given all of that that's going on. One additional note that I will add because it's relevant for our discussion that we need to have about this is from the Dresden Budget Committee today. Um, we've realized, uh, I don't remember how, who necessarily brought it up, um, but the question about healthcare. Came up and the idea that the ten percent increase that is assumed in the quick model, Teresa, correct me if I'm wrong here, please. Uh, may actually be too low. And so if that's the case, then the three percent we're proposing is certainly not. Doesn't feel quite as relevant, um, and so a new potential proposal is to make that a window of three to four percent. While we're kind of figuring out what the impact of that is, so.
Mm hmm.
I will. Sorry, I had music, do you walk out too?
So, and this, this also came up at Dresden this morning, which is the three percent as written. Already accounts for all the increases at the, for negotiations, right? The teacher and staff increases are already part of that, so sometimes there's confusion or at least disagreement over whether when we say these, these percentage goals, does that already account for? Negotiated budgeting changes, so this does, right?
This would, yes, yeah. And I, I think, I think we were perhaps ambitiously low, um, in discussing with the, with the budget committee. Um, that said, I will, you know, one of the wonderful things about the budget process at the Ray School is that they really start with a zero-based budgeting and build up from there. And so, um, I think our, you know, given the sort of general financial pressures that are swirling about and so many unknowns at this point. Um, I think our collective goal was to, um. Really challenge them to think about what, what the greatest needs are to meet the, the, um, you know, within the strategic plan and to meet the goals of the school. Um, and build up from there, um, but as Renee said, I think there are some external factors, um, that will. Very likely push that three percent up, and so we are open to that, um. But also wanting to recognize, you know, that. Inflation's at three point two, our negotiated teacher increases at two percent. So, you know, this may be a year without obviously willing to sacrifice educational programming in any way. Where we can think about, well, where are some of the areas that, you know, we maybe don't need to go quite as high this year, so.
Mm hmm. I actually have a question and I should have asked it earlier. In one of the meetings today was suggested that there are active leaks in this building. And I wanted to have that clarified because although we've been talking about the useful lifespan of roofs. I think I, I guess I was, I was unaware of this fully that there were active leaks. So is that, was that an accurate statement, does anyone know?
That's a good question. Didn't get to come up in our budget committee.
They're not.
Have there not been leaks?
We see them most often. When we get a spring melt. And then a refreeze and then a remelt, so this ice builds up. Yeah, we can almost predict, we're like, oh, it's getting warm, oh, it's gonna freeze again, get our buckets.
And has, I mean, so that's what I heard for the high school as well, and I was, oh. Um, so has anyone? Thought about implementing a solution for ice dams in the problem locations, which there are products available. Basically some heating products which prevent the ice from, because what you're gonna do is. Ruin a whole bunch of infrastructure that we will then have a much bigger project to deal with, and so I am a bit concerned about that.
Mm hmm.
And so I think in this budget cycle, especially since the sort of update that Renee gave a little blow earlier about the CI PSC on the town level.
Hmm.
Having some really big costs coming in two years. Now would be the time for us to do any of the projects so that we don't overwhelm the taxpayers in two years.
And that was also something that we did mention to the TruX Cullens.
Yes.
As well as the roofs on the buildings and the flat roof situation and also tying that into the potential for solar, right? And making that part of the project.
There's like wants and needs and like it is an emergency need if there is actually water getting into the building from the roof. That is not a.
Well, that's considered, so that, that's a, it needs to be fixed.
I think, I, my sense is that over the past, I'll say five years, but I, I think this is kind of, and this is where I'm glad that we finally have a lot of data behind it. And a committee that's going to hopefully identify those must-do immediately.
Yeah.
I think what we've been hesitating on, on a lot of these things, um, because this is not just the sheer problem, right? Um, we've been putting the Band-Aids on because we want to redo the roofs. And so like, do you want to spend the money to fix the roof when you're gonna redo the roof and been in this vicious cycle of like. You know, is it worth fixing or should we just redo it, so, yeah, Teresa.
Explain to me since I've been here.
Yeah.
And even at the SAU, when we're getting out the buckets and.
Yeah, I'm interested.
All year, but I've been talking about the roofs since I got here because it kind of.
This is unfathomable, it's unfathomable because it is, I mean, we are all about fiscal responsibility. Until you have a contractor hired and a date schedule for whatever large scale project you're going to do. This has got to be taken care of now. I mean, I ca- I couldn't believe, I was, I was in a state of shock in the meeting when it was the lowest percentage of active leaks.
Mm hmm.
It's not okay.
Mm hmm.
That's not our job.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. So, that.
Uh, I, I have, I'm having a level in high school chuckle in listening to you because. I think a lot of schools went with the flat roof.
Yeah.
And.
Look, I leak.
Um, yeah.
Mike.
I do.
And I don't at all need to be dismissive, but, um, yeah.
Flat roofs in New England may not.
Yeah, I mean, the leaks at Evan High School over the years when I was there.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Better than the sewage.
Came up last week at the Marion Cross Board meeting.
Mm hmm.
There leaks.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're looking for data points. My office had the leak upstairs, you know, we kind of protect the copiers. So I think it's pretty universal, and Tony, I've seen Tony leap up and go out and shovel and. Tony's pretty frustrated because he's been trying to get them fixed for years.
You have to have flat roofs shovelled, you have to have white ice dam mitigation on that roof.
Yeah.
You can't just say, oh, this is something we're gonna, so I'm throwing that out there, something that I learned today. And we, this is urgent.
You're gonna be excited about our retainage conversation.
Yeah.
Good, okay. Yes.
And all in goodness, this also came up at Dresden earlier today, which is, I'd be curious for a Ray School perspective on heating and cooling issues. Where it was pointed out at this meeting that the high school, um, does monitor temperatures per room. And that often exceeds high eighties into the low nineties within the classrooms, which obviously has issues with terms of student ability to pay attention, teachers' ways of safety in terms of. Passing out and fainting. There were, I've heard strong anecdotal evidence that the gym also can become incredibly uncomfortable to the point that people might pass out as well just by being there during the summer, let alone there's large gatherings like. Especially sporting events or voting day or whatever. And we've also heard at least at Dresden that RMS is even worse than the high school in terms of heating and cooling issues. Does anyone have a sense of how Ray is doing and if there's room by room temperature monitoring? Looking, I guess, at, uh, Colleen, who's still with us, everyone.
Hi, sorry. Um, I, uh, you're asking about temperature variations within the building?
And as well as does it get to the point where it is dangerously unhealthy, sense of being too hot or too cold within the school year at the school?
I couldn't hear what you said, you, you zoned out there.
There are, there have been concerns expressed at the other buildings that it is either too hot and or too cold at certain parts of the year, which becomes an issue of. Safety, potential liability, medical issues, um, for select populations, as well as just general comfort and ability to focus on learning. Do we know if at the Ray School is temperature being tracked and if so, is it getting dangerously high or dangerously low at any point during the school year?
I don't know that it's being tracked in any way, I can say that it's, there are wild variations between one end of the building and the other on any given day, depending on where, where you are in the building. Um, you can be in one room and be, need a sweater and then you're in the next room and you're peeling off layers, so it's, it's, it varies wildly between all over the building.
Um, it's not tracked in a sense that we have, you know, one hundred and eighty days on a daily basis, we're filling out what the temperature is. But in our warm months or those particularly warm days, you can see on your wall when you're uncomfortably hot in the classroom, you can see on your wall the thermostat saying. And we do have classrooms that get up into the high eighties and to the low nineties. We're fortunate in that we're a single story instead of having the stacked stories like RMS and the high school have. Um, and we do bring out humidifier, de-humidifiers as well as very large fans to move the air around. Um, we purchased four, five, or, um, air conditioner units for windows for our fourth grade classrooms.
Hmm.
Um, and we rely on teachers letting us know when things are getting particularly warm. Um, as we talked about moving forward and with goals through the strategic plan in the areas of facilities. Um, back in when I was in my other role, uh, Teresa and I did have that conversation about how we need to be looking at air conditioning across the entire Ray School building. Um, in a way that makes sense. Because we are no longer a school that just is in session during the cooler months of the year. So we used to be able to say more easily, um, well, there's just a couple of hot days and those couple of hot days, we'll put the fans in. Um, we're having more of those hot days and we're also using the school year round, whether it be for summer services, for summer camps and for Hanover rec camps as well. Um, so it has become more of an ongoing issue and it is a concern.
Yeah.
And now adventure, that's, it's only gonna get worse with, uh, climate change, et cetera, and it's. A liability issue for us, if nothing, in addition to all the other things we talked about, and I don't think it's acceptable personally.
Well, and I'll add a, a, an additional liability situation, I mean, I, I know. In my house, we leave the windows open at night and it cools down and then we close them during the day and that's lovely, we can't do that here. We also should not be propping doors open to make rooms cool enough during the day. Because that's a safety issue, so, you know, there's all those pieces that come into play as well.
And I'll try and move one more thing from the surveys, which, um, I'm not done yet with the Hanover Ray School specific surveys, but. Across all four schools, in terms of when we ask the parents, what are our top most pressing priorities? Making the buildings more sustainable is a very strong number two and by far the, the most non-academic issue that parents are concerned about. So I would argue we have a lot of buy-in and support from our parent population on this issue.
Okay, if it's okay with everybody, I, I wanna let Renee continue with you. I need help to add on the, uh, sorry, on the, uh, budget guidelines. We are kind of geeking into the retainage conversation, so just leave all this in mind.
For free for you, Renee.
Yeah, I, I hope I live up to expectations. I won't. Um. I'm trying to just double check, yeah, I, I do think it's noteworthy as I'm just observing this conversation where we've been going that, uh, we did in the budget committee last Friday explicitly ask. About strategic plan and goals associated with it for this school year. And we highlighted most things associated with facilities. So, and you, you can see that in terms of kind of the volume of things under each bullet point. It's not that that's where the dollar is necessarily gonna go this year, but it is something that we clearly need to be starting to plan around.
Mm hmm.
Um, in one way or another, so. Um, we only have one negotiation this year, um, with the support staff.
Service.
A service staff, thank you very much, um. But next year should be full of fun, I guess, so.
Can you add something?
Right this second. But I, I think when we get to that, if the board is comfortable with, Renee mentioned this recommendation, but giving a three to four percent corridor, recognizing that when we give a corridor, we tend to go to the high end of the corridor. Uh, but I, I think that's reasonable in this case for all of the reasons that, that this discussion has brought up. Um, I think we, we wanna send a message to the internal budget committee as they're doing some, they're thinking that um, facilities need to be a priority. And so, um, we're gonna talk about some of those funding mechanisms now. But um, being really mindful of the operating costs and keeping those on the lower side where it is reasonable without sacrificing programming. Um, so that we can start to really tackle some of this um, physical plant maintenance and um, replacement that needs to happen. So, yeah, that.
And before we switch documents, could um, someone in the room provide more context on what this means or what the expectations are for expanding the cafeteria as well as an orchestra space? And know what we mean by that?
Well, so our, our cafeteria um, is not, it, it would not be allowed if the building were built right now. It cannot house all the students, not even. It can't, it can't hold, I, maybe one class at a time, maybe. It's very small. Uh, and so I, I know if we, if we talked about building a new building, right, like or, or building a new wing, we would want the cafeteria to, to be to code, to, to house our students. I mean, truly. Uh, I don't know if that is what that's referring to or if it's something more temporary. No, okay, no, for the budget committee. Um, and then orchestra space, I don't know the answer to that either. Uh, this is currently the orchestra space.
Right, yeah.
Right? No?
So here are strings and band. Here, the one small room that's off of the main office.
Where Sheila used to be. For a time.
Okay, yes. And like, Colleen, I can't see if you're raising your hand, so feel free to cut me off and answer this question. Currently, right here, right, this is, this is their music classroom. The majority of the space is used really wisely by our music educator here. Um, this is a problem, right? The accordion, we can't rely on having two spaces here. Um, and even if we were to close this space, the other side of that wall is P E and it's not soundproof. That is also not soundproof. So you've got music stacked with instruments stacked with P E and that's this area is not conducive to that space. Uh, those practices happening all at the same time. Uh, right now, seven oh four is where band and strings are sharing the space, which means that on any given day, only one of them is working. Um, additionally, I can't, I don't think that I heard it said um, so far, but we're considering preschool. On Hanover's side, if we were to, yeah, if we were to implement, you'll hear more about that in the future. Robert and I have been working with Rhett and Cindy um, in some discussions. Uh, we've been having this, this discussions for a while, but this will be a year where you may receive a presentation very soon about that. Um, the one of the spaces that we would consider that would be ideal for a pre K classroom is that space. And if that happens, we really don't have a space for strings and band. So we're trying to think of um, creative ways where we can create or purchase or house an additional space for orchestra and band for that business.
Okay, thank you. Um, so all of that, I, again, I would encourage the budget committee to, you know, think think through those priorities, think through the costs and, um, you know, uh, Colleen, I'm, I'm looking, looking at you through the computer here, but uh, I think, you know, the, as a board, we have traditionally been very, um, you know, mindful of, of operating costs, but also encouraged our um, race school staff and budget uh, committee to bring forth ideas, right? And if, if we can find room in the budget, if we can find room in the reserve funds, if we can find room um, for things that are important, then we'll consider those. So um, different levels of funding is also sometimes helpful. I know, um, in the past, the budget committee has brought us like, this is the next thing that we would spend money on. Or this is the next thing that we, you know, if we had this extra funding, this would be our next priority. So that's always helpful too. So, uh, board members, we will be looking for a vote on the budget guidelines in our business requiring action. Hopefully not too much progress. Any other concerns or can we move on to retainage? Okay, so the retainage, um, there's lots and lots of documents here now, just wait. Um, we, uh, so just a brief overview of retainage. And this, spent my afternoon trying to wrap my head around this. Um, so just as a reminder for everybody else who might need to also rewrap their heads around it. Each year, there is, we, we, we budget a certain amount. We don't hit that amount exactly, cause that would be a risky way to run our business, right? Um, and so there is hopefully a surplus at the end of the year. Um, when that surplus happens, um, there are several things that happen with that surplus. Part of it when we are um, early in the budgeting process, kind of looking at, you know, did we have, um, for example, last year, we had um, several positions that were unfilled for a long time. Um, we had some monies come in that we didn't expect. We had, you know, things like that that happened early on in the year. We can kind of project that we're expecting a certain amount of surplus and Teresa, feel free to kick me out if I'm misexplaining things. And so in, as part of our budgeting process, there's often a certain amount that we will promise back um, to offset taxation, promise back to the taxpayers to offset taxation. Um, and so, um, we kind of go through our year with, with and through our budgeting process with that in mind. Um, when, and Teresa has um, provided us, it's sort of the last document that you'll see on there, an unaudited fund balance. Um, and that is sort of everything pulled together at the end of last year, including the amount that we set in our budget process when we went to the warrant articles last year. We said to the taxpayers, we anticipate being able to return to you one point four million. Now, just remind everybody, we've been sitting on some kind of large surpluses rolling forward because of COVID. Um, when we went through COVID, we had a, a fair amount of um, unspent funds, um, because we didn't have the building open. We didn't have, you know, so a lot of this is still kind of calming down from that post-COVID time. Um, and so we, we told the taxpayers, we've given them back one point four million. Um, we, as you'll see at the bottom of the document, and this was a new setup for me, Teresa. I like the way you've laid it out. I think it's, it, it, it's actually clearer for me to understand. Um, but so that, the, the five hundred and ninety thousand that you see there is what we retained on last year's surplus. Um, and I'll just remind everybody that we are allowed to retain up to five percent. Our voters have allowed us to do that. Five percent is a lot at roughly like seven hundred thousand. Um, so that amount is possible for us to retain. Um, we also, in our warrant articles last spring, asked the voters to authorize us to keep a hundred thousand um, and put it into our reserve funds for maintenance and um, uh, yes, the maintenance funds. Yeah, um, which is, I know Tara will be happy to hear. Uh, so we can also take a hundred thousand of that and put it into our maintenance funds. So when you look at kind of all of that put together, um, it, it, we have essentially three hundred and ninety-four thousand that we can vote to retain. Um, we can vote this evening to put a hundred thousand into that maintenance fund and retain two hundred and ninety-four thousand. We could decide to give money back to the town in excess of that one point four million, though I don't think we need to do that. Um, there are many good reasons, of which I've had stated here tonight, to make sure that we have um, those reserve funds kind of sitting there. Um, and last thing I'll say, and sorry, I've been rambling for a while, but um, you know, one of the things that you know, is, that I like about this, again, Teresa, there's sort of a shift in the way that we have been thinking about retained funds, I think. In the past, retained funds in our, in our process have sort of been viewed as part of revenues. And I haven't seen them pulled out as clearly as you've done here, which is super helpful. Um, and I want us all as a board to consider that, you know, we don't have to think about rolling those back in and giving them back to the town as we move into next year. And as we look at the monies that we have left in the year, we don't have to say, you know, we wanna give that one point four million back. Um, we can say we have these big projects coming up and we actually think we need to keep any surplus that we have in our budgets in order to complete these important projects, right? Technology, infrastructure, right? All of these things that we've been talking about. So I think as we start to, to plan into next year, um, shifting a little bit how we're thinking about um, what we wanna do with excess funds might be a really valuable exercise for this group.
Now, I have a question linked to the retainage. I'm just looking at that wall over there and wondering if given the sound issues in here, and Colleen, I can't see you, and the gym, it still seems to merit fixing that wall. I mean, to have something that doesn't function of the size of this doesn't function. Um, is that, would that be a priority for the race school to get that wall replaced?
Absolutely, yes. Okay. Um, and, and to that end, I also wanted to point out for, I don't know if this is facilities committee, if it's our current administration, if it's the budget committee that's gonna be convening, um, I think there is a good chance that there will be some surplus in this year if I just think about some of the positions that we have filled and unfilled within the district and, um, you know, some of the separate differentials that we have. I think as we sort of plan out towards the end of this year, we should be mindful of that and how those monies might be used in this current year, not even, I'm not talking the budget process for next year, but in this current year. Um, being thoughtful about what monies might be diverted to that kind of a project. So. Yeah, Colleen, I don't know if you wanted to add. Sorry, I'm continuing ignoring you.
No, this is fine, sorry. I, yeah, I think we're, replacing or repairing this wall is a priority for this space, especially now that we have the cast program, the larger cast program here and we need the additional spaces.
Um, so, yeah, go ahead, Deb.
I, I, I just think it bears, what, given what Colleen just said, it bears stating that there is a revenue attached to spending that money. In other words, the after-school programs and everything rely on us, that they bring in money, that they rely on us to spend some money, correct?
That makes sense. I, I just. And thanks, Deb, yeah. And number three on like the second to last page of like things that are, uh, have been considered, um, not being considered in the quick model, number three is the accordion wall. Uh, and I am noting, I think Renee did do an update to this, is that right?
To.
The, to clarify, like, the budget, the three to four percent.
The guidelines.
Yeah, the guidelines, yeah. Um, so to kind of highlight the fact that the fixing of the accordion wall also helps with additional revenue from other
Right.
Use of the building.
For sure.
Um, so on the retainage, um, when we get to that point, I think, um, I, I, is the board looking for a head nod at this point? And then there, there's motion language later on, but are we generally comfortable with the concept of keeping the three hundred and ninety-four thousand estimated surplus? That's my sense. Yes, okay. Um, and of that, putting a hundred thousand into our maintenance reserve fund as the taxpayers allow us to do. Yes.
And I just want to point out to our new members that Dresden does not have a retained fund. This is a Hanover specific thing due to the differences in interstate revenue and things like that.
Um, and I also wanted to further point out, cause I, I don't know if this is why Tara just looked at me the way she looked at me, but I'm that's the reason she looked at me. So I think, no, I think it's part, it wasn't a bad look, it was a thoughtful. Um, I think the, um, you know, there could be a question, why earmark that for maintenance, right? I mean, it's, it's our money anyway. Um, and again, I think this is an opportunity for us to sort of shift how we're talking about retainage, shift how we're thinking about retainage. Um, what has happened to our retainage amount historically is that it's been viewed as part of revenue that can get rolled in and that can just sort of automatically be considered as, you know, it's gonna roll back in next year versus we're gonna keep retaining up to that five percent, right? Um, and so part of that would be earmarked, like carving that out and saying, no, don't think about this as money that could potentially roll back in. This is going into the maintenance fund and it is not to be touched except for that purpose, right? Um, acknowledging that we have, I think, plenty of opportunity to spend the, what would now be, I believe, a balance of around three hundred and seventy-five thousand in that.
And there, I was just thinking, I just gave you.
Something about that. It was in the warrant article language. I can grab it real fast. Um, Tara.
So I was actually thinking. Projected surplus. Um, and wondering where the differential um, came from the, the one point four that was promised to the town. I'm wondering if we have a, a vital infrastructure problem for seventy-five thousand dollars that's sitting here unaddressed, why we did not remove um, a hundred thousand dollars to accomplish the soundproofing and fix the wall and then just return one point three, because this is an issue.
Yes.
This is an issue. We cannot leave it unaddressed. It should not be part of the budget process for next year. It needs to be fixed now.
And I will point out that we do have the option to not return the one point four million to the taxpayers. Acknowledging that doing so says to the taxpayers, we are deciding to raise your tax rate in October, right? That is what it's, so, I mean, doing that, we have that option and I want us to know that we have that option to say we're actually only going to return one point three at this point. Now, why, yes.
We didn't plan for this to break.
Yeah.
And that's not something that really is reasonable or applicable to leave unaddressed. And it's not a budgeted item. It is an operational cost. If we're not doing a capital improvement, it just needs to be done. So instead of thinking about these kinds of things and figuring out, how do we let the taxpayers know that they're going to eventually have to pay more money for this? Why don't we just fix it now when we have the mechanism to do so? Save ourselves the time and energy and avoid the cost increases that are going to happen, any impacts to the school that are going to occur. As we were kind of stable instead of having spikes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, Ben, go ahead.
There are items that are way more than seven, than seventy-five that we don't bring to the public sketch. It just, they broke.
Well, I would suggest a hundred thousand because there's also apparently a sound grouping issue that we need to attend to. And it makes sense to do it at the same time, if that's what we need for the space to be more functional. I'm just, I'm throwing that out there and I mean, I would rather just address it now and give the benefits to the students and the instructors. Um, rather than talking about it for the next budget cycle, which makes no sense to me.
I agree with that. I, yes. Um, we have, we, as in my recollection, have never promised a certain amount back to the town and then
Not done it.
Not done it. Um, and so I'm looking to Teresa to sort of understand that sounds like a big deal to me.
It could be, but at the same time, um, given the, again, the circumstance of why you would be doing it. It's not because you're just deciding to decorate or something. So you've got something that's definitely malfunctioned in that sense. Um, I haven't done yet because we have to turn in our final revision of our revenues, which will be due this month. So that is something that we're definitely, because that'll be in the factor and setting the tax rate and everything else too, that whole thing, like you're saying.
And that's due end of September.
Yeah, that, that paper, yes. So Karen, what was my initial question is how did we get to a projected balance of one point one seven three to a promise of one point four? I guess that's, how does that process work? Because I just don't know.
So the one point, and this is where I say I, I initially had, and Renee got to hear my heart attack. I initially saw the one point one and I said, oh my gosh, we're three hundred thousand short of what we promised we would have. Um, and then I saw that five ninety at the bottom and I kind of went, aha, as long as we're not double counting, I see what happened. We're not double counting. Teresa's done a good job. And, and I think, um, so the answer to your question is that back in the budget process, when our business administrator when our business administrator looked at where we were in the year, this was a comfortable, safe estimate of where we would be at the end of the year. But again, incorporating that 590 as a, an expendable amount. And that's where I'm saying, I think going forward, we need to shift how we're thinking about whatever we're retaining as not an expendable amount in our calculation.
So just to be sure, we communicated this, our operational position before the wall broke? And then the wall broke? Or we just decided not to deal with the wall and we communicated the 1.4 right now? Because I think we just need to be more thoughtful about what is really in excess and what our school is doing without. Because we are choosing not to fix things in that manner.
Yeah. Yeah.
And one question about this is this, a, I know it's an annoyance and it's a hindrance, is it a safety issue?
If it comes out, I've heard it is a safety issue, because it's kind of happening there and it's not, that's from Colleen in our meeting.
As long as it's closed, as long as it's pushed back in the wall. When it gets pulled up, pulled out, it doesn't hang correctly, there's nothing to secure it. It's not, it's not in the track the right way on the top. Which, that's why it's not being pulled out, it can't be pulled out all the way.
For the student who's mischievous, caused problems?
I can't move it, so I don't think a student can move it.
Teresa, can you, do you know off the top of your head? If a hundred thousand dollar difference, right? If we, if we reduce those revenues by a hundred thousand and we keep, we return 1.3 instead of 1.4? Do you know the impact on the tax rate of that hundred thousand off the top of your head?
I don't off the top of my head.
The tax rate, I haven't established it.
Yeah.
So we're all around the line.
Yeah. I'm trying to look at last year's to understand.
Well, but given that the town, oh, sorry. Given that the town just reappraised everything, I would imagine that's going to be pretty significant.
That's true. There's a. Seriously. Okay, so what, yeah, oh, sorry, Teresa, go ahead.
For the record, we do have a capital reserve fund. And we do have funds in there. So if it really is that big of a concern and should be replaced, that's what that's there for.
Agreed, yeah. I think the question is more, are we comfortable? Are we comfortable with retaining only 300,000 heading into next year? It is, I think, the question. Do we feel like that is sufficient?
I am not with the list of physical plant issues that are ahead of us. I'm, I'm not comfortable, we are setting ourselves up. And I feel like we need to be fiscally responsible about how we approach this, which is not trying to grab all the money at once and put some undue burden on the taxpayers at one very inflection point in time. It's, it's planning in advance and taking care of these things.
So here's my proposal, dear board members. I am thinking, as I said, we've, we've just, I don't disagree with you, and I actually, I think this makes a lot of sense, we've just never done it before. Given that you have a Finance Committee meeting coming up in advance of our Dresden meeting, I'm wondering if it might make sense to schedule a special handover meeting before the Dresden meeting to make this vote, so that we can just do our due diligence and understanding the impact of this decision. Is that a reasonable proposal? Ben?
I would point out that there is a four-chair schedule before Dresden as well as a possible SAU add-on at night as well.
I mean, my hope would be that this would actually be pretty much a vote, right? Because I think we've had the conversation here. I'm, is anyone in disagreement with attempting to lower that to 1.3 million?
No, this is my only question. Is the information, the question you just asked, that we want to get what the impact is on the tax? And, and based on what you just shared, Tara, are we going to get that information between now and that meeting? Is that actually possible? Or are we just going to be giving it another period of time?
I will say, this is just me trying to be a good community member, as we asked them to do last spring, right? I, I think making this kind of decision without giving them a heads up that we are considering this, what is the impact of this for you? And, you know, it, it may be actually a pretty small impact, given, and they may say, yeah, fix the plant. If there's something wrong, fix it, fix the ice leaks, fix the, you know, that needs to be a priority. It's actually not a huge impact, so please make that decision. Or they may say, oh, my gosh, you have no idea what that's going to do to us, you know? Yeah.
I think my position on all this is the funds are going to have to be expended, whether we want to or not. What our discussion right now is where are the funds coming from?
And when?
And how does that impact the rest of the planning that we have to do to continue to run things?
Correct.
I would say, you know, in a better way.
Yeah.
So that's up, where's the money coming from, it's not optional, we have to do it, so.
Yeah, I agree, and, and again, I would say the timing of it, right? I mean, that's my only, it's the creating expectation.
And you asked a question about due diligence, I'm, I'm all for due diligence. So a couple of conversations, I'm going to start.
Okay, so if it's okay with everyone, Teresa, will that timing be okay if we do that on the 23rd?
Sure.
Okay. Right, I mean, we could do it whenever, just that's a Dresden meeting, so I assume enough of us will be there, right?
Back on, please let me know.
Take this opportunity. Okay, so when we get down to the voting portion of the meeting, we'll just table that until the following, I just lost my agenda, sorry, guys, until the following year. Okay? Good? All right, you guys are awesome, thank you so much. Moving on, oh, sorry, before we move on, was there any, there's a bunch of documents there, Teresa, were there any other documents that we need to know about now?
The documents that are included are just the supporting documentation that back up all the numbers that are put into the front document, which will also back up all the, the DOE ones that's populated and everything else, and then I bring that forward next time.
Amazing, thank you so much. And I did have one other question, the balance of our various retainage accounts? Sorry, our reserve accounts?
Funds and stuff?
Yeah, those are in, just in the full budget, is that where we would find those?
No, like Fund 27 has all the, like, student activity counts, all the special reserves or, so that is a separate, you'll see attached paper, you'll.
Fund 27, I see it, okay, super.
The food service fund and the grant funds.
It has the opening balance there, okay, brilliant, thank you so much. All right, Deb, you ready to do your show?
Sure. And first, I want to apologize, I pushed this onto the September meeting because the NHSBA conference thing was the, well, the first weekend in October. And then they changed it. And there were some real interesting issues there, where it appeared that emails were not going through and either it was on their end, I'm pretty sure, rather than ours. But anyhow, it's all been cleaned up, so I apologize for, but we may as well do it, if you prep for it. So you'll notice, what I was thinking I would do is go through each of the resolutions that needs some conversation. The first three are all basically the same. And suggest what I think we should do with it, not to tell you what to do. And then you can disagree with me if you want, and we'll go through all of them, and then we can vote. So the first one you'll recognize, because it was ours. And they are supporting an alternative resolution. And my, my preference, I don't like their language that says any legislation that would have the effect of further undermining the reliability and protecting revenues and expenses. I wanted, I wanted to say any open enrollment legislation as it will have the effect of further undermining. So I would like to go in all peace, love, and tie guy, because they usually expect that I'm going to argue with them and say, fine, but I would like to propose an amendment to that language, because I think theirs is too passive and wishy-washy. So the same thing would be, and they're, they're basically responding to the Dover and the Oyster River the same way. So that's my thinking about the first three. Good for me to keep going?
Yep.
So then Chesterfield is about adding the language "public", and I think the School Board Association's alternate resolution is even more thorough, because it just keeps putting it in place. It's public schools, public school districts, public education. So I would support the alternative resolution for that one. And then the next one is really interesting. I'm just going to take two seconds, no, I won't, I'll take more than that. So Chesterfield got understandably peeved, because open enrollment was attached to a bill that talked about bullying and cyberbullying. And so they, their resolution is to say, non-German amendments can't be attached to bills. Well, and the School Board Association says, sometimes we want that amendment. And I had a conversation with Mary Hackenphilips this afternoon, who, I think you all know, is one of our four state reps, and she says, there are what, there's actually a bill that is going to come up in conference maybe next week. And it was, I've already forgotten what, it's not, it wasn't voted in expedient to legislate, it was, you know, given to interim study. And in fact, an amendment is in the works that will help Clairemont in some fashion, I don't know what. But the reality is, from a just logistical point of view, it can be very helpful to be able to attach an amendment so that you can deal immediately with a situation that's come up. So I.
Like an accordion wall.
Like an accordion wall. And I won't say that in Concord, because they won't know what I'm talking about. But I completely agree with the NHSBA recommendation, and I thought that added bit about Clairemont helps to further it. The next one is Raymond, and I, again, I am all on board with the NHSBA director's recommendation, because they don't want to have anything that remotely suggests they approve of vouchers. So they don't want to go down this road. And I, I completely concur. Notice, I'm assuming you've all read these, and if you haven't and you need me to give you a quick blurb, I'm happy to do that. So that's that one. And the next one is also Raymond, and they wanted to identify a number that should be gone, going into building aid program every year. They identified it as $60 million. And in fact, there are resolutions, and you can see them right there, there are two, and these are existing resolutions, these aren't ones that come up for debate. These are sort of foundational, you need to, ha, that was a pun and I didn't mean it to be. But this is about building and putting money into building. So again, I found myself agreeing with the New Hampshire School Board Association, who knew? And, and they, I mean, I, I say this in jest, and they noticed that these have been, I think one of them has been in place since, or they noted that the state hasn't fulfilled their obligation since 2009. It's shocking, shocking, I say, buying gambling going on. 20 is, is an interesting one, because it's so Concord-specific. And it's unfortunate, because it makes it hard for the School Board Association to really respond to it. It's, and so they basically said, we already have a resolution, and they do, about providing funding for a school lunch program. So again, I feel like, yep, I concur, yeah, go ahead.
Deb, what are your thoughts, where a number of these kind of have the point of, we already do that?
Right.
And I remember a previous year that that's been an attempt made by the School Boards, where it was to draw attention to the issue, let alone, yeah, we know you still care, but still, this is still an ongoing issue in that. What are your thoughts on that, is that, you agree with NHSBA, sort of, we've already done it, or is it a paid issue?
Well, that was the very next one, which is.
Okay, I would, I see.
I, I do think that this is really important to have school lunches, but the, the tenor in Concord is not to do that. And so I think the NHSBA is looking for, I think there are times when it's important to goose them a little bit and say, the membership really thinks this is important. And I would opt for
The gun.
For the gun one, except that, once again, Concord wrote it all about Concord. And what, I think one of the problems is that these things come up in, you know, they have to be filed by the middle of the summer, and they are or are not quite as resonant in the fall, but I, I hear you, I'm. It, it's kind of interesting, because my granddaughter started kindergarten this fall over in Maine, and we were talking on the phone after her first day of school, and her mom says, what did you have for lunch? And I thought, what are you, why are you asking her what she had for lunch? They all get free lunch in Maine. And, yeah, so she was just talking about what her options were, what she picked, and I thought, oh, my God, what is wrong with New Hampshire? But, yeah. Yeah, I think that what could happen with this one is, i- if you give me direction, is for me to say, our board wants again to emphasize how important this is and to make sure that the, the fact that it's a continuing resolution, or it's an existing resolution, doesn't allow the issue to kind of disappear from conversation.
And I'll remind, Teresa, for new board members, that Dresden handover, I think, actually issued a resolution about guns several years ago, where we ourselves, as a board, have occasionally, it's probably less than one a year now, sent out resolutions of our own that go into Valley News and similar expressing our thoughts, and we did one on guns a few years ago.
So. I'm just making myself.
Deb, I might, I might suggest that the, the food one could, I, I think both of those, you know, could be tied together even to say that both of the Concord resolutions, while, you know, understandably emphasizing or, or pointing to resolutions that already exist, they have a board like to express their support for renewing the conversation around both.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I completely agree. And I, I, I think the challenge, I, I really want people, they're changing, it used to be that you had to actually bring each resolution forward deliberately for it to be discussed. And now they are going to discuss each resolution regardless. And so I think the fact that Concord has, with the, the next resolution, they are itemizing school shootings, and of course, we've had two more since they presented this, or at least two more, the Annunciation and then today in Colorado. I think it gives us the opportunity to talk once more about how this is just unsustainable and whatever, but. I wrote down as my notes for tonight, I'm not sure why Concord keeps referencing their district. I always opt for supporting resolutions about fund control. So it may be, you may decide you don't want me to vote in support of this, but I'm happy to, to vote in support of it. And then they, they have all their resolutions there. The hook set resolution is about lowering the threshold for approving major infrastructure projects to 50% plus one vote. And the NHSBA sort of sidesteps it and says, there should be lower thresholds. They, I think, probably understandably, given the amount of money being spent, and I just remember the Dresden field vote, they probably are reluctant to have it be 50 plus one. But, and I also don't know, and maybe somebody here does, whose authority sets it at 60%? Does, is that the legislature?
It says it's an RSA.
Yeah, okay.
And the Russia.
That's, oh, right, there it is. So I don't, yeah, anyway, I don't know. Of course, it would be a law, stupid Debbie. And it just, they just say lower, so I. So I, I mean, I don't know if you guys want and think, let's go for fifty plus one. But I know that that was a real. I mean, maybe you guys don't remember, but I counted the votes for the purchase of the Dresden Fields. And I will never forget. You all know it passed by one vote. Yeah, we bought the Dresden Fields.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Not only did we buy them by one vote.
Are we even the board, uh, the district?
District bought the Norwich Plainfield.
Actually before my time.
And, yeah, yeah. And people came in late to vote and were turned away. Even like a quarter after seven. What? Yeah. They thought the polls were up until seven thirty. Yeah. So I think fifty plus one is, personally, is, is not great, but.
Yeah, I, I, I kind of like the higher thresholds to make sure that the community is in support of it. I know that it's harder to reach it, but when it's such a big deal. I mean, I feel like it would be better to have the support and work on developing that support first for participation. But I don't know, it's a personal thing.
Well, so maybe the happy medium is then, whoa, or the alternative resolution, which is.
Sure, a little lower, like fifty five.
Yeah.
Right?
I'd be curious, I don't feel like I have enough data. Like, there's a piece of the one for me that feels like I don't have the knowledge base to fully understand. Like, I'd love some examples, like, that's a great example.
Yeah.
But like, how often are we talking that? Like, it is a small little number here between fifty and sixty. It's not like the huge, so when they say lower, like.
Or voting, that's like.
Yeah, yeah, like.
For some of this stuff, where it says, I, I get bond articles, and it says, and other warrant articles that raise funds. Like, there are ways you can get around warrant articles, depending on how you feel about raising or not. Like, so it's, it's kind of a weird, why just warrant articles? Why just, what does square infrastructure mean? That can mean different things to different people. You can just add it to the budget instead of making it a warrant article, if that is your philosophical approach to those things. So it just, I could go either way on this one.
Yeah, I hope they hurt people who like feel passionate.
Well, and, you know, one of the things that, that the last few weeks, and paying attention to what's happening in Claremont, serves to underscore is how school boards are volunteer groups. And the degree to which they know or don't know some of the strategies that you were describing. If this is maintenance or repair, why is it a separate, a separate bond article? You know, I just feel empathy for a lot of school districts that may be trying to move forward some fixes, and they can't get them there because people just won't support anything. So, I mean, that doesn't give us a rash, a, a direction for this. Then the next one, so I'm almost done, is the Hookset School Board about fully funding catastrophic special ed. And here the NHSBA has, I think, six, one, two, three, or they have five resolutions listed that do that very thing. So I think we can move on from that. I honestly suspect some people don't, I, I think this one came out of Edelblue at the end of the last school year, kind of arbitrarily saying, we're not gonna fund special ed. And this, what? Burst that ended up, you know, not being a problem. So that's what I think this is. And I suspect that, again, this is not a statement about Hookset. But I don't know how many people gathered here around the table, including me, have spent time reading through all of the, the existing elements of what the New Hampshire School Board does before we come up with our resolutions. So they may well have not seen this.
Well, that also gets to the point I made earlier, where like the newest of these five resolutions is fourteen years old. And so like, you're, you're correct. How many people are reading what the resolutions are from nineteen ninety-four, when I was eleven? Or nineteen ninety, when I was seven? Really being given much credence here, so like. Just because it's on, on the, on the rolls now, does that move things?
Exactly. Yeah.
I'm, I'm okay with, personally, I'm okay with them saying, hey, let's keep maintaining those. There's been, they're defensive, like, look what we wrote thirty years ago, see? You know, that's good enough. But I think they're also pretty selective on when they pull that card and when they don't.
Yes, they are. And.
And that's why there's file.
Yeah.
Right, right. But I, I do think your point, Ben, is, is worth converting into a conversation like in response to the two Concord resolutions, which is, yes, true, comma, but look at the years of these. And it bears repeating, and we want to make that statement. And put like a little fire under you. The last.
Sorry, so I just looked it up to make sure they actually changed the name of catastrophic aid to special education aid. Just for what it's worth, I'm kind of surprised they used that term still.
Yeah, I, I was surprised by that, but not the same reason. I just thought, I haven't seen it called catastrophic aid.
Yeah, it's a while ago. So anyway, sorry, carry on.
I mean, it's just being incorrect on there.
Yeah. Well, and I think there you go back to people doing their best.
For sure.
Yeah, just. And so the final one is, I think, kind of cool. Because it's about allowing somebody to count, even if not in person, count towards a quorum if they or somebody they care for at home has a disability. And I thought that seemed like a very reasonable resolution. And I thought that the, the boards, the School Board Associations, effort to amend current resolutions to improve the language of them and showing that in the yellow was actually really good in taking out a resolution that merits removal. So that was one that I thought we should support. Yep.
And, and I agree with you in the NHSBA one. Because from my read of it, and I could be missing something here, but the actual non-knock resolution does not actually say remote participation. It just says, don't help for quorum. Doesn't say anything about that they're actively participating in the meeting, or that they're attending virtually, or by phone, or anything like that.
Yeah, but it says members who are not able to be physically present at a meeting.
But it doesn't say they're participating in the meeting. Just so that they.
Oh, interesting.
Were being there.
Yeah, I just.
They see it anywhere, but I don't actually see it saying that.
But the revision does.
Yeah, the NHS does do it, I think with the intent.
Yeah.
Explicitly stated.
But I think it actually proves it.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's it.
Yes. Yeah, does the, is the alternate resolution allowing anyone to re-participate?
It means board members.
Well, I mean, I mean, but any board member, it doesn't have to be because of disability. It's just, it seems to me, I'm reading it, that it's just opening up remote.
Yeah.
Without defining what remote means either.
Without having it qualified for a certain reason. And that's what they do in Norway, so they have to have one person present. And everyone else can be around.
Right.
Which probably helps.
Oh, yeah.
So should quorum.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think that's great.
All right. So Deb, let me get to the motion heard of this.
Yes.
Would you be comfortable about doing my war?
Okay, perfect. Love that.
And, I mean, historically, we also give to Deborah representative the ability to handle to her best conference, representing our interests for things that may come up that we don't know about at the meeting.
Right, like if somebody else had an amendment somewhat like what I was suggesting to Deborah, like, we could still just say, it's really kind of sad, to be honest with you, how many school board members are reluctant to take any initiative without the, and they haven't gotten that kind of express permission from their school boards.
And we're kind of allowed to attend, remember, we can't both attend.
Yeah, well, you could have, Mike, you could have a second. But give me, I'm the only one who has two ballots. And they make a statement. There is one member who's representing two school boards. And it's her. So you can come and you can hold the other one.
My special allowance, I may.
Okay.
I may join you.
Great. I have snacks. No, it's not. It's a big table outside, and you can go in and out and get more snacks. The whole.
Maybe I shouldn't have shared. All right. Everyone's gonna want, I don't know. I've got a movement into business required action so that Ben can vote before I know it, has to leave really soon here to get a kiddo. So I will take a motion to approve items B. Through, yeah, B through D. I move to approve item B through D by consent. Uh, second by Ben. And everyone's here, so all in favor? And for the note ticker, that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. We are not approving E this evening. We are gonna table F to a special meeting on the twenty-third. Thank you in advance, everyone, for attending that. And we'll move on to the NHSBA resolutions.
Okay, so. I move to authorize myself, Deb Nelson, to vote in accordance with school board direction at this evening's meeting on the NHSBA resolutions on behalf of the Hanover School Board and authorize per need to vote on other business as needed at the annual meeting on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Second for Ben, is there any discussion? There was a little bit of, any, any of those that anybody wanted to pull out or didn't feel comfortable with Ben or with the Debs? Say Ben for some reason, Debs.
They will have another Hanover Board meeting, actually, now, because of the change in the date. So if you want to revisit something, we're also going to talk about it at Dresden. So you could, you have plenty.
If there's no discussion, I will take a vote, all in favor? All right, thank you, Deb, for that. And we will move on to communications and reports. Yeah, thank you, Ben. I have no to report, I don't think. Just thank you to everyone who's working through all of the budget matters in these weeks. I know it is very intense. February's gonna feel really nice. It's just around the corner. So that's all I have for this evening. And we'll move on into committee reports. Heard a lot from the budget committee. Anything else, Renee? No, no? Okay. Anything else from finance committee, Tara, Renee?
Committee's coming up soon.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys, both of you for that service. We just heard from NHSBA. And anything from CIPC? Next is December nineteenth. And so we will have more information.
Meeting was canceled.
Yes, the meeting in August was canceled.
Thank you for sending me that.
So I'm sorry, I misunderstood. So CIPC is on the nineteenth. When is the Hanover Finance?
It's the third Thursday, I believe, of the month.
Okay.
January.
Thank you very much. All right, nothing else from committees? We will move on to our superintendent's report.
Well, I just wanted to report on our opening of school. I thought it was really wonderful, smooth opening. We started the first Monday with all of our staff. And we had a full staff breakfast, followed by, I gave just like a little pep talk for the beginning of the school year. And then we held a student panel. And I had students from each of the schools and former students who are now teachers. And some of our schools served on the panel. And we closed with some recognitions for our ten-year staff members, twenty-year staff members, and thirty-year staff members. So I got a lot of positive feedback about it. And I just thought it was a really nice way to start the school year. So, and then Wednesday, students came, seemed like a smooth opening on all accounts. And so the year's off to, I think, really a positive start and a good start. I feel good about it, I just keep knocking on wood. Hoping everything continues. But even with, you know, the world out of the cell phone bans and things like that, I feel like it's been a very positive start. I've been able to be in all of the schools multiple times, which has been great. I asked Ryan to put that in my schedule over the summer, to just set aside specific times throughout the week. So it's really, it's worked out fabulously. So I'm just hoping that continues. And I am attending a NHFAA meeting on Friday, which is followed by Drummond Woodsum, which will be, I think, very helpful because we are going to look at all of the legislation that's been passed and really analyze what it actually means. Because I keep asking various organizations, okay, what really does this mean for our schools in the district? And what impact will this have? So I think that will be a helpful presentation to attend. And I'll bring back some information from that for all of you as well. So, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? I just chatted with some teachers at various schools, but all said they were very excited to see you and Lauren present in their schools on day one.
Oh, good.
And I am sure that they would continue to sing your praises about being present. And so I think your presence is just, I wanted to make sure you knew, they see it, they appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for saying that. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, anything else to go ahead?
Thank you.
Lauren?
We just really are having the best time. Seeing like the magic that is being created in all of the schools. It is energizing and inspiring. And just a really, a privilege to be a part of. So I've felt really grateful to be learning and working with Robin and having those visits as well. And like Robin said, just keep looking at my schedule and be like, I can still make that visit. I'm going to that visit, we're doing the thing. So hoping that continues in the future. I gave you an update on all the things that I am trying to learn and do under Robin's great mentorship and patience. So lots of things moving forward. One thing that I didn't include that I will make sure to include in the next report is that we're moving forward with some of our district-wide safety planning as well. So I'll make sure to include that in the future, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for who?
Yes, I'll just say the same thing that it has been wonderful working with Lauren. And she has done an amazing job, just, there's so many pieces to this position that she's taken on. And she's just embraced all of them and gathered the information so quickly and easily. So she's a fast learner, and she really hasn't even needed me. Probably doing a better job than I did, so.
That's wonderful. I'm glad you guys are, oh, such a great start. I have one quick question for you, Lauren. Thank you for the summary of sort of the grant impacts and whatnot. And I was just curious, like, this may be unfair questionable, scale one to ten. I have trouble kind of understanding, like, how big an impact has the reduction in grant monies had, like, on our operations?
So far, we're okay.
So far, okay.
Yeah, we really are. And I think that we can also attribute that to the ability to tap into some other funding sources as needed. And so, you know, having things like the Friends of Hanover Norway Schools, our amazing KTO, as well as Prechman, make it so that a couple thousand dollars feels like a lot. But, and also, we can look at other creative ways to accomplish the things that we were doing. And then there, one big thing that I didn't spell out for you in this is that previously, we had allocated a lot of our Title I monies towards, sorry. Yep, Title I and Title II monies towards like funding of positions and interventionists. Those are not part of the budget, so that's automatically like fifty thousand dollars back that we're looking at for SRS A grant funding, that we're gonna be able to backfill some of those reduced allocations in the Title I and Title II. So I'm, I'm not currently worried, but I think that it's important to keep a pulse on that trend. Because certainly not positive, but we operationally are okay right now.
That was the feeling I got from your report, and I just wanted to confirm that.
At first, when I first started working on the grants and I saw the decrease. I was like.
But we're, we are, yeah.
Alright, super, thank you.
Well, although you do indicate that the camp for the Kinder, Kinder kiddo, you, Kinder kitties.
Yeah.
Will be one week instead of two.
Yes.
Um, and so that looks like a fairly.
Keep going down.
Yeah, I saw SRS, is that what it is? Is that referring to?
This past year.
No, no, I just wasn't clear that that meant if we can get that money in, it can be a two week program.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the implication?
So the SRS A funds are another federal fund that we received and we actually can use those funds for Title One, Title Two. Or Title Four, any of those kinds of activities and in the past, we've used it for interventionists. And, um, because we already have those funds budgeted.
Right.
We, they were already pre-allocated, so we can take that, some of that funding to. Re- replace the funding for the kindergarten.
Okay.
That we had had previously in Title One.
I, I think I just wasn't clear.
Yeah.
That it was an easy fix.
Yes, but should be, be fixed, yes.
Okay.
Cause that has been like popular and successful, so I'd like to keep that in place.
Alrighty, anything else for Lauren? Okay, Teresa, you are up.
I uploaded my little newsletter. I, I touched on a few things already, um, you know, the auditors for the most part have been here this week. Um, going through the school districts, doing the audits, everything else, they're doing one district at a time, trying something different this year. Um, so they're not having us run around twenty different screens, bother back and forth trying to give them stuff. Um, for the various ones, so that's good, um, we're fully staffed, I noted that, finally. Now I just gotta get them up to speed, nothing else, um. I know, uh, transportation seems to have gone pretty well, it was one little minor hiccup right at the beginning, but. That was just not something foreseeable, um, and everything else, not for. This school, but it just happened at another school, but on that, it seems like transportation's done very well, I did mention in there. Um, getting introduced to that pickup pilot, I said it already. From.
Pickup patrol.
Pickup patrol, I said it wrong, I should just remember paw patrol. But so I came over and, um. Samantha showed me how it all worked, I was pretty impressed with how it works and everything else, because it's very mundane. How we didn't have students really linked to buses and trying to do that. Um, based on whether or not they filled out that form. And because you really only wanted new riders, but people would fill it out, so we had a hundred and fifty forms and then when we got done. We had less than ten that were actually new rider. The others, so, if the only way to look them up is now you gotta go to a private school or somewhere else, so, so this is what's been happening, it seems like. For a very long time, that it's been an administrative task. Where, where I've been before, we outsourced in the bus companies, they have software. Where you upload that file and, but apparently ours doesn't, so it's been manually done here, um, but. I'm kind of excited to see how that program works, cause so far I'm impressed and I'm like, there's no reason why we wouldn't be using it. Especially at the other elementary school and everything else and, um, and for parents to be able to. Also say, hey, my kid's not gonna be on the bus today, that's pretty good or some reason, and I think the. They can communicate with the class staff too, maybe a teacher's out and there's a sub, but you've got the, um. They pair of education assistants, um, you know, they know the schools and stuff like that, so, oh, that seems not gonna be. But it's pretty handsome and they've got rosters, those bus drivers have rosters of those kids, blah, blah.
Great. Yeah. Awesome. Alright, questions for Teresa?
Yeah, this isn't a question, but I just, as we start this new year with you as you. I just really appreciate what you're bringing to our meetings and the clarity of the material you presented to us. And I know it's, you know, when you're replacing somebody who had big shoes. Um, it's good to be told that you're really doing a wonderful job, so thank you.
We know how hard you're working, I'm gonna bring up my emails on top of it, so thank you, I, we, yes. We are grateful and we will all get into a rhythm as we, as we move forward, so. Um, alright, I don't think that we need a non-public. Alright, we will move right along. Are there any members of the public online? I don't have my Ben sheet sheet here, so.
Won't see him raising their hand.
Alright, super, uh, with that then, um, if there are any agenda items for next meeting, noting that. There was a request for the test, discussion at some point, whenever that's ready, um. Our next meeting will be the twenty third of September for a very short special meeting to. Finally decide on a change, we're gonna do that, I'll figure out what I need to do in the meantime, to make sure we're ready for that. Um, and then our next regular meeting is Wednesday, October eighth, and I will take a motion to adjourn, Deb.
I move to adjourn the meeting at nine oh two P M.
That is second by Renee, roll call starting in Marcella.
Do you go as a yes?
Oh, then yes. Finally, yes.
Nelson, yes?
Nelson. I'll just note that Ben had to step out at eight fifty, I'm sure he's in favor of adjourn.